Okay.
You ready?
Yeah.
Call this meeting to order. One call please.
Mayor Kenos is absent. Mr. Amalay?
Here.
Ms. McCready?
Here.
Mr. McQueen is absent. Mr. Barrow?
Here.
Mr. Ruth?
Here.
Mrs. Amer?
Here.
So, in absence of Mayor Kenos, and while she's running late, I'm going to be presiding over the meeting. Notice this meeting was provided to the Burnsville News and Courier-News, filed by municipal clerk and posted on municipal bulletin board on December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please rise for the budgetary committee.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, limited to all, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the two thousand twenty-five, November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the Burnsville Borough Council. This meeting is being conducted in person in the council chambers of Borough Hall and is being broadcast live on YouTube and on Zoom to make it as convenient as possible for residents to attend the meeting. Members of the public are here in person and those attending remote, these on Zoom, given the opportunity to comment at appropriate times during the meeting and according to the following guidelines. Members of the public will be allowed to speak during the open sessions and during formal public hearings on the agenda including the public hearings and all ordinances. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker, which will be monitored and enforced by the borough clerk. Comments containing offensive, profane, or indecent language or language constituted hate speech will not be permitted. Remote participants have been muted until they are unmuted by the clerk and remote participants will not be able to unmute themselves. The clerk will mute remote speakers at the expiration of the three minutes allotted time or if they make any inappropriate workouts of comments. All speakers, whether Zoom in person or on Zoom, shall state their names and addresses before they make comments. Speakers on Zoom shall activate their cameras so that they can be seen by members of the governing body and audience. Though either the governing body provide a live broadcast of this meeting or technological problems accounted during the course of the meeting that affect remote viewing and/or participating participation will not invalidate this meeting or any action taken, including but not limited to a adoption of any ordinance, resolution, or motion. Okay, we're going to start off with a presentation tonight. So, I was very fortunate to be able to attend the Hometown Heroes program hosted by Congressman Kane at the Burnsville Library. I'm very honored to have hosted this free program here in the borough and an honor standout law enforcement from all around the seventh district of New Jersey. And very fortunate that one of our own Sergeant Tim Richards was, uh, Tim Richard was honored during this. I'm gonna read quickly what the, um, I guess, you know, come forward Sergeant Richard and, uh, Chief Remmy. So he was nominated by Chief Remmy and I'm gonna read out what was read out at the actual event by the Congressman. Sergeant Richard is a dedicated officer who is well-known in the community. He's active with the department's lead law enforcement against drugs and violence program, which aims to help students understand the risks they may face. Sergeant Richard serves as a liaison to community events between the department and our community. He's also a trained emergency medic, medical technician and former sheriff's officer. So, Chief Remmy offer a few remarks and then we can give him the flag.
Congressman Kane reached out to the department looking for dedicated, hard-working, community-oriented officers. Tim is the first person that comes to mind. I think anybody in this town that knows Tim, um, or if I say his name, they know exactly who I'm talking about. You've made a good impression on the community, on the police department, um, and everybody you've come in contact with. So I think you're a very, uh, worthy recipient of this award. Congratulations.
Congressman Kane presented this flag which flew over the United States Capitol. I'm gonna read the proclamation here. The flag of the United States of America, this, the certified that the accompanying flag was flown over the United States Capitol at the request of the Honorable Thomas H. Kane, Junior Member of Congress, for Sergeant Timothy Richard, two thousand twenty-four law enforcement hometown hero and honor your bravery and dedication to serve and protect as a member of the Burnsville Police Department. Congratulations. Go ahead, you stand here.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Tim did not get this because he lives across the street from you.
Thank you.
That's around the hour.
Well, sir.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, approval of minutes. Notice you approve the October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-four minutes. All those appear?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, open session for items not listed in the public hearing. We have a number of public hearings today. But, and also the one on the parking lots, which we're going to a separate public hearing on. Parking lot lights. Any other items not listed for a public hearing, please come forward or raise your hand if you're on Zoom. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Ordinances, but comments be limited, three minutes per speaker. Should I just read this? Mayor opened public hearing ordinance two thousand twenty-four, two thousand and six. Bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of a new ambulance by the Borough of Burnsville and the County of Somerset, New Jersey appropriated two hundred thousand dollars therefor and authorizing the issuance of a hundred and seventy thousand in bonds or notes of the Borough to finance such appropriation. Are we, this is getting continued, right?
Well, we had said if you wanted to do a public hearing, you could do it, but we can't vote on it.
Right.
Because you don't have enough eligible members, I don't think. You need four, right?
Great.
Um, so you don't have enough eligible members and it's not the right amount anyway. So you could make a motion and nobody seconded it and then it just dies and we're gonna introduce it next year anyway when we have more information. Or you can have a public hearing and then close it and then it's gonna die anyway because you're not gonna vote for it.
So why don't we, Jeff, so okay, let's open the public hearing and see if there's any comments and then we'll continue with the next meeting?
We can do that and then at that meeting we can vote it down.
If there was more information.
It's gonna die in the hearing.
Right.
Yes, it's gonna die in the hearing. Okay, so anybody from the public want to be heard on this ordinance? Okay.
So just do a bunch of things. We can't do the public hearing through the December meeting, remember, for provocation.
Go ahead, do that check?
Yes.
Second? Just a voice vote? All those appear?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Mayor opened the public hearing on ordinance two thousand twenty-four, two thousand eight. An ordinance repealing section seven dash seven dot nine of the Borough Code which prohibits overnight parking for November fifteenth through April first. Anyone from the public want to be heard on this? And if you recall, this was a redundant ordinance which prohibited any overnight parking in the borough. Well, sorry, it prohibited when there was a snow emergency, but there are other emergency ordinances that did that. And so we're going, we're at, um, a recommendation achieved, we are going to eliminate, repeal this section. Okay, closing the public hearing. Do I have a? Yeah, correct.
Um, I move to pass ordinance twenty twenty-four dash two thousand eight on final reading and adopt as published.
Second.
Ball call vote?
Mr. Amalay?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. Barrow?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Amer?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor to open public hearing ordinance two thousand and twenty-four dash twenty-ten, increasing the penalties for violating the Borough Truck Route ordinance while traveling on a street or road having a grade in excess of five percent and supplementing and amending chapter seven of the Borough Code entitled Traffic. Anyone in the public want to be heard on this ordinance? Okay, seeing none. Jeff, since it's public safety, you want to put this?
I move to pass ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-ten on final reading and adopt as published.
Second.
Mrs. Amer?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yeah.
Mr. Barrow?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. Amalay?
Yes.
Okay, opening the public hearing on ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash two thousand eleven and ordinance vacating a portion of Burners Path adjacent to block one fourteen, block one, which is outside the paved roadway and which is required for the construction of affordable housing development at sixty-three Burners Avenue. Anyone in the public wants to be heard on this?
Yeah, one.
Good, I see, uh.
Sarah Stelma, I'll unmute.
Hi, I have a question. I'm not exactly sure if this is the right forum for it, so I can easily be redirected if it's not. I own, um, oh, you have to see my video, so here.
Address.
Oh, sorry, so I'm Sarah Stelma. I, uh, own the, uh, fifty-nine Burners Avenue. Um, so just up the street, um, I have, um, two, I guess, questions. Is this saying that the part of the road's gonna be, uh, redirected and you're, I'm not quite sure on how much of the street is being closed off? And just one comment on redirecting the road around that corner. Oftentimes it floods around that edge, so I was just wondering if there was, um, that was taken into account in this redirecting the road? And then just related to that big, um, building that, I, I missed some of the other meetings that was discussed with the real final plan of how big that building is and the final plan of their, uh, parking lot. But I'm just wondering, um, what, if there's overflow of parking from that future building and parking lot, how it's taken into, uh, consideration for the surrounding, um, uh, properties? Because I would think that some other people would end up basically parking in front of my house. So I, uh, there are more questions about what the plan was for that.
Jack, I don't know where it's gonna answer.
Yes, this ordinance just vacates a small triangle across the street from sixty-three Burners Avenue. Uh, it's not part of the roadway now. It, it was required by the planning board. All, all of the other questions you've asked are not covered with, relevant to this ordinance at all.
Okay, where, ask those.
At the planning board or is that the best place?
I guess the zoning officer.
Zoning officer?
Best place to start, yes.
Let me, give me one second, we're finding out for you.
The, the road's not being redirected. This, this is outside the paved area in parent, right? Uh, it's just a small triangle.
Right, so.
Weaken things up.
To interpret, basically, the planning board required us to vacate a very small portion as part of the overall property plan for this. So it came to council to do that. The, the roadway is not being redirected. I, it sounds like you have a lot of questions about the actual development itself, which would be with the zoning office being told, um, by the, by the administrator and, uh, and the council.
Yeah, so that development has been approved by the planning board. It has had plan approvals.
Right, so there, so there's plan approvals. You can get the information on it.
Yes. From zoning and planning is the best place.
Are you able to call them?
I, I just couldn't catch where I'm, I, I couldn't quite hear where I'm being directed to, which person or office.
Her name's Denise Bellardo and she is the Planning and Zoning Coordinator.
What's the number? Do you have an, or email?
Extension one four five.
She's extension one four five, so it's seven six six three thousand, extension one four five.
Okay.
And if you want, her email is D. David F. and Frank I L A R D O at burnsville.com.
It's just normal.
You can also stop by, go level the library too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? No? Okay. Jeff, you wanna do this?
I'm sure. I move to pass ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eleven on final reading and adopt as published. A second.
Mr. Amalay?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. Barrow?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yeah.
Mrs. Amer?
Yeah.
Hey, um, opening the public hearing on ordinance two thousand twenty-four, two thousand and twelve, ordinance of the Borough of Burnsville, the County of Somerset, New Jersey, adopting amendment to the sixty-five Morristown Road Redevelopment Plan pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. Is this the one we're gonna have? Okay, great. So we have Fran, um, McMinnan?
McMannan.
McMannan, good, nice to meet you. Uh, just gonna come and speak about this for a second and she's from McMannan, uh, Scotland and Down.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Fran McMannan, McMannan and Scotland and Down, and we serve as redevelopment council to the borough. So as you mentioned, ordinance twenty-four, uh, twenty twenty-four, two thousand and twelve, it's on tonight's agenda for final adoption. This ordinance provides for the adoption of certain amendments to the sixty-five Morristown Road Redevelopment Plan. The redevelopment plan is being amended in connection with a redevelopment project by fifteen Sandsberry, who has been designated as the conditional redeveloper of that property in connection with the project for a classic car dealership, which was not permitted under the original redevelopment plan, which is why these amendments are necessary. Caldwell and Associates, the borough planner, prepared the amendments to the redevelopment plan and the amended plan is on file with the borough clerk. On October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, uh, the redevelopment plan amendment was introduced by council and then referred to the planning board for review as required by the local redevelopment and housing law. Under the redevelopment law, the planning board is tasked with two things. First, it needs to identify any amendments that are inconsistent with the borough's master plan. So on November fourteenth, the Borough Planning Board reviewed the redevelopment plan amendment and found that the redevelopment plan amendment is not inconsistent with the borough's master plan as required by the redevelopment law. So that was its first task. Its second task is to make any recommendations or other recommendations that the planning board deems appropriate. And the planning board did make several recommendations to the proposed amendment. The redevelopment law requires that council take action on each of the recommendations. So I'm gonna go through the recommendations and then there'll be a vote by council. So the first recommendation was to provide for a minimum sidewalk width standard of no less than eight feet. The original redevelopment plan in section six point five already provided for the eight-foot sidewalk width. However, uh, the amendment that was required was to, uh, delete the four-foot landscape buffer in order to provide for that eight-foot sidewalk width. So the amendment is, um, to delete the four-foot landscape buffer that was in section six point five of the redevelopment plan. The second recommendation is to clarify the total number of parking spaces permitted on the property. And the planner added certain language to the amendment providing for not less than twelve parking spaces for such uses. Uh, the third amendment was to clarify the type of doors on the repair base. The original redevelopment plan just referenced exterior doors and the, uh, planner amended the exterior doors to read as overhead garage bay doors. Uh, and then the fourth recommendation was, which although it was not included in the planning board resolution, was noted on the, uh, record by the planning board that they, uh, requested that there be clarification on the parking standards to allow for the display of vehicles for sale in the front and side yards. Given the nature of this business, that it's gonna be a classic car dealership, uh, they wanted to make sure it was clear that they, they would be able to display vehicles in the windows and in the side yard. So that is also, um, being clarified in the, in the proposed amendment. So all the recommendations from the planning board are clarifications which resulted in immaterial changes from the original amended plan that was introduced in October. So, uh, council would need to take action on, on both, on all of those recommendations. And then, once the vote is over, I'd also like to address one of the items that's on the consent agenda.
We're in a public hearing first, so let me just first see if there is any public comment, um, on this ordinance?
There's nothing on, on, on.
So Jay, you wanna move then?
I move to pass ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-twelve on final reading and adopt as published.
Okay.
Before we vote on the ordinance, though, we need to vote on the recommendations.
I was just gonna say.
Yes.
Can you talk about the first one again, the eight-foot sidewalk?
Sure.
Because we don't necessarily have to accept, right?
Yeah, correct.
You can reject some, and if you reject the recommendations, you have to, uh, put on the record the reason for their rejection. That's what the redevelopment law requires. So I'm gonna go to that section.
I don't know, may I ask you, we talked about this, about, we, we can take the recommendations.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all that we're requiring.
Alright, so what's being deleted is sidewalk planting zone. The four-foot closest to the curb line shall be comprised of a planting zone. The planting zone shall create a buffer against the roadway and include street trees or other plantings compliant with the parameters described below. Lighting, lighting may also be provided in planting zone. So the amendment would be to delete that to provide for the eight-foot sidewalk.
And allow them to park in the front.
Well, right now, there's nothing there, right? There's nothing there, anything there? So, and I assume they don't wanna do it because they wanna be able to have a clear view of cars?
Well, I think this is, recommendation came from the planning board.
Right.
And I think they're trying to make the eight-foot sidewalk consistent in that area.
Right, there, there's a, um, desire from the planning board to, in that, um, downtown corridor, to have eight-foot consistent sidewalks all the way throughout. So this is their way of ensuring that there's eight-foot consistent sidewalks in that, right away, in that right away, you know, ascending from like the top right area straight through, so closer to downtown.
Yes.
Right, that's.
That's exactly, and so these are recommendations from the planning board, just to clarify, not the redeveloper.
Right, right, right.
And, and the eight-foot sidewalks are, are consistent with what's written? So I'm just looking at the aerial photo, I can't tell if they're different.
It's all, it's all paved, but.
Yeah, no, I'm looking at there, I'm just looking at the company, I, what I'm wondering is, are they the same as the lot to the right, well, left? It looks like they don't have, but the bank, does the bank have eight-foot sidewalks in front of it, or?
What they're saying is.
Nothing.
There's gonna be, right now, it's a flat paved tarp, and there's nothing. So, and there should be eight feet of where a person can walk, right? Rather than the buffer zone, which was how many feet was it?
Four feet.
Rather than four feet of trees so that a car doesn't think about just pulling right onto the sidewalk. Because it's a car dealership.
Yeah.
I mean, if you've ever walked over there, Jay, it's kind of like, you want a buffer, I feel like, even if the sidewalk has to be four feet and the planting four feet.
Right.
But I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to not have the buffer, and they're saying.
I think in order to achieve the eight-foot sidewalk, they need to eliminate the buffer.
But I like the buffer.
Right, I think what they're trying to achieve, I'm not saying that we should agree with it, is, is they're, they're trying to compel eight-foot sidewalks in all projects, right? So like this, future projects, et cetera. So they have a consistent eight-foot sidewalk all the way downtown. We may decide that it's not appropriate for this property based on what you just said right there.
But we're not gonna be able to change Walters Garden or the auto body, right? Because we don't have, that's going based on current zoning, which current zoning is eight feet sidewalks, right? That's what's in.
I can't speak to that. Uh, yeah, this, the amendments, yeah, that were done by the planner, I can't speak to that.
Yeah, so.
Good.
I believe that the planning board required Walters, the application for the formal Walters to be eight feet.
Okay, so they're, they're enforcing it then.
As, I think as applications come up, they're requiring eight-foot sidewalks. So it's gonna be a little piecemeal, I guess, until they all have.
Right.
Application.
And the buffer is between the street and sidewalk, correct?
Yeah, I believe that's where the buffer would be located.
Anything you don't think? You think it creates a?
I, I'm not getting you say very good. But anyway, that was one that I had a question on, and then the other one was the parking. Tell me about that one first. Not less than twelve spaces, the second one?
Right, yes.
Okay, yeah, we're going to.
Working is. Okay, so for the parking requirements, the amendment proposes a maximum fifteen spaces for storage of vehicles for sale outside. Indoor storage is limited to the building size. Employee parking at one space per employee and customer parking at one space for five cars proposed to be sold on the property. And in any event, not less than twelve parking spaces for such uses.
So they wanna require those things?
Sorry?
That's what they want as the requirement.
The planning board wanted to get, uh, because I think what was in there originally was they, the amendment did not, the amendment did not provide for the not less than twelve parking spaces for such uses. So their, their question was, what's the sort of minimum number of parking spaces that can be used on that site?
So they want us to require them a minimum of twelve?
I thought that they were just, I thought Matt said last week that they just wanted a justification for.
So I don't think that's justified, and I, if, if, like, if we don't agree with what they say, then we just have to say that that's not justified and we're not going to do that.
You can reject the recommendation and explain why you're rejecting it on the record.
But, but to your point, were they saying that you had to have this much parking or were they saying, let us know, they just wanted us to recognize that.
Yeah, what?
It was different.
Right, like what were we originally thinking when we put the plan together? Think that's what they were requesting? What was our justification for the, the current parking? When we still?
Well, last week when we talked about it, we said like, they're not gonna have, it's not like, right? So we're, like, to me, that's too many things to require of them since only one person really shops there at the time.
That would also include, well, to your, yes. Their recommendation was to consider adding language to clarify the total number of parking spaces permitted at the property. And this would also be employee spaces. These twelve would not be just for customers. They would be for employees and customers.
Okay.
Going back to the sidewalk discussion, just like, and, and again, I don't wanna state something as fact that's not, but I, 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 just looking at the PNC Bank and going all the way down to beyond pace collision, it seems like those are eight-foot sidewalks based on the measurements, like with people.
Yeah.
So if you were trying to be consistent with, well, no, no, they've got, they're, the sidewalks go right up the street.
Where?
This is PNC Bank, sidewalk goes right up the street and then down here by Pace Collisions, the sidewalks go, uh, yeah. So the, I mean, those, here are the eight-foot sidewalks. So the, in between those two is the Pace Collision Service and the Audi dealership, or the old Audi dealership. And so if you were to extend that sidewalk, it would be insistent line across, but.
But don't we have much stay on the other side where you know, I'm looking, he's on, I know the grass?
Yeah, yeah, um.
Should we be consistent with the property?
I, I don't see anything in the ordinance requiring eight-foot sidewalks. It, it appears to be just a requirement that the planning board proposes.
Yeah, we're speaking. You wanna take this one at a time?
Sure.
Right?
Yeah.
And decide, so the first one was.
Eight-foot sidewalk.
That was the first one? Some consensus on how we feel on this one.
Okay, and eight-foot sidewalk is eight foot. So much, much easier to reason, and I was gonna say, alright, so so it would be double what we have on the other side of the street.
What I'm looking across the street, that it appears like they've got more than eight feet with the green zones.
With the green zone.
Yeah, yeah, so I I don't know that they have the room to go more than eight space. Eight, I I don't know, but it would appear there's less room on the Audi dealership side than there is at the relitor across the street, or the bank across the street, where they have a little bit more setback.
Yeah.
So I don't know if they can fit a, whatever they were planning on four foot, and then four foot of green space, or but it appears like, if you look at the PNC Bank, which is to the right of the Audi dealership, and the pace collision, which is to the left, halfway through the, maybe at the, the, um, old uh, garden center, that's where the sidewalk started, appears that that is an eight foot sidewalk. And the PNC Bank is an eight foot sidewalk that terminates, that starts at the beginning of the road and comes at eight feet down. So it would be consistent if you, I don't know if it.
Right, but it certainly isn't. Right next door is, um that's that little shopping center with the Delphian, is that right? Is that further down?
No, it's PNC Bank, and then you go to the Delphian, Asian Way, the Delphian's over there.
Right, then, what's over here, what's over here?
That's PNC Bank.
That's PNC Bank?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you're right, Al, they do have a green zone of the PNC Bank.
Yeah, that's what I meant, okay.
But not in between a road and sidewalk.
No, it's it's beyond south of the sidewalk.
That's the issue for for this lot, obviously, is that
They don't have enough.
You don't have enough room there to put a four foot main space and then an eight foot, or four feet, that's good.
Yeah, I mean, and this is the thing, I think, because when we were putting the plan together, we put that planter stuff there so that nothing could be in front, I think, was our initial intent. But now, but now we're also, did you read that we're also allowing the cars to be parked in the front?
The display, there would be a, uh, permitting a display to show the cars, I believe within the showroom, and to the, let me just clarify that.
Um, they are necessary.
Yes.
Yeah. Probably put cars here.
Yeah, I mean, that is a lot of the parts, right?
Yes, they may be displayed in the front yard.
Right. I mean what I understand the goal of consistency, it's not gonna be consistent down there anyway, where?
Well, my thing is like, do you wanna be consistent with a car centric business next door, that's like people are accustomed to driving, right? Along to what should be actually a sidewalk?
Right.
Is that, I mean, to me, that's that's not the direction that I personally think the downtown should go. So, do we want to be consistent with that? In my opinion, the answer is no.
You you're saying it's just better safety objective by requiring the planter in the front and then having the sidewalk behind, but ensuring people aren't gonna just pull right up? In that for pedestrians.
Your whole goal is that.
Like.
Yeah, love is agree with that?
Plan was written by.
Uh, I think the original read about these amendments were prepared by, um.
Jessica Caldwell.
Yes, exactly, Jessica Caldwell, Caldwell Associates. The original redevelopment plan was prepared by Topography, sort of topology.
How do you guys feel?
I mean I'd just rather see the sidewalk and have it be consistent, rather than have a planter in there only on that property.
You you would.
Right, but I guess. Put the sidewalk in and extend it.
That is the basis in the planning board resolution for why they made this recommendation, is to ensure that any sidewalk installed at the property is consistent with the surrounding area.
So, it's in a straight line, right?
Yeah.
Right, so the planters would even be.
If you have one side of the road, right? Cause that's where you said that the green space would be alongside the road, and then there'd be a sidewalk.
Correct.
Would not align with the.
So it would be like a park strip, not, the green space would not be closer to the business?
Right, uh, the original redevelopment plan provides that the four foot closest to the curb line shall be comprised comprised of a planting zone.
Hmm, okay. So it would be like sidewalk up, and then it shipped to four feet, and then it shipped back out.
In in a way, this would be moving this sidewalk portion of the street, as in the other places, and the planter is behind it.
Hmm.
And then now they.
Yeah, you go four foot and four foot, yeah.
Right.
And then this one, just in front of Walters and in front of the Autobody, the, there's holes for the electric.
Yeah.
In like, where the planter area would be.
Yeah, so you have, there's a great, yeah.
Yeah.
But that's the only place where it doesn't have those poles already existed, uh, in the front. Every other one does. So like in front of Walters, they have this like little area with the electrical pole there, and then they've got the sidewalk.
I guess it's just hard for me to make those recommendations, or accept their recommendations without seeing like a visual site plan.
I mean, you wanna reject it, but open a consideration from the final site plan? Like, could we reject it now? But if they, I mean, I guess it wouldn't matter at that point.
Well, what we're talking about is not rejecting the whole ordinance.
No, of course.
We're talking about just rejecting the recommendations of the planning board.
Well, one at a time, right?
One at a time.
One at a time.
Finding a reason why.
Correct, exactly.
So if we reject the planning board's recommendation specific to this, then the development should be made with the four foot and four foot, the way that it's currently written.
Correct. It will be as originally written.
Which would be, okay. So if we reject what they're saying, we're not gonna come back to it, it'd be four foot.
And I mean for me, the reason is it's safer that way. I mean, I don't have like a scientific evidence.
Well, you're right, I mean, if if.
It's just like an opinion in terms of a pedestrian feeling safer when they walk in front of there, they're looking at cars in the window.
Yeah.
I mean there's a reason why it was drawn up that way, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I'd just rather it be consistent than.
But you're talking about being consistent with something next door that may or may not be there for much longer, you know what I'm saying? Walters is gonna be redesigned when they become a restaurant, we don't know what, you know, what that.
They're gonna have the eight feet sidewalks, they already said that they're mandating them at the planning board. So they'll have them, but they already have that there already. But again, mainly because those poles are in the way, so they can't, they couldn't really put anything there, but there's no planter, there's nothing, there's no additional safety measure, if you will, a car goes up on the curb, it's either hitting a pole or hitting somebody bumping. Not gonna.
I mean, is there a real, I mean, the building's right there, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it also slows people down, if you think about like the more you crowd the street, sitting on a wide open street.
Does anyone know how the site plan was submitted, right now? Was submitted, were the planters there or not?
Are you talking about sixty five hours?
Yeah, they haven't done anything, they can't do anything until we.
Yeah.
First plan.
The only thing to adopt, probably is figured, but isn't isn't there a bike lane around there, you're probably on a bike lane, at least that's what. Oh, sorry.
The shoulder, it's not wide enough.
Yeah, I mean, the shoulders are too big.
Yeah, it's not.
So it's gonna be as there as you would be eight foot in?
Yeah. Thank you, Sean.
Jack or Jerry?
I I would, uh, I I, I don't see any reason why they shouldn't go with what was in, I don't see the planning board, I don't think we need to adopt it, I think that's I'm fine with believing it, whether it was in the original plan.
Thank you, go strongly, okay, so we're gonna reject. So do we take it one at a time?
You do about, yeah.
Okay, so vote on.
The first recommendation.
Rejecting it, and stating the reason why, why don't you state the reason why, Chris?
Well, is that valid enough?
That we want to maintain the current plan? For valid enough reason?
Uh, I would be, I would just reiterate with the reasons that you've said about safety and creating the buffer.
We feel like the buffer of four feet of planting and trees is a safer uh, more pedestrian friendly environment.
Okay, second?
Sorry.
And you want to do a roll call with?
Okay, Mr. Mera?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yeah.
Mr. Mera?
Yes.
McCready?
Yes.
Mr. Ambly?
Yes.
Okay.
The second one.
Second recommendation is this parking spots or?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. That recommendation was, the Borough Council should consider adding language to clarify the total number of parking spaces permitted at the property. As currently drafted, the permitted ratio of parking spaces per employee or per flat cars to be sold at the property leaves the total number of permitted parking spaces unclear, as the number of employees or number of cars to be sold at the property may be subject to change, that's the planning board comment on the parking. So the amendment that was proposed by the planner is to, um, provide for a maximum fifteen spaces for storage of vehicles for sale outside, indoor storage is limited to the building size. Employee parking at one space per employee and customer parking at one space for five cars proposed to be sold on the property, and in any event, not less than twelve parking spaces for such uses. So making sure that there's a provision for twelve parking spaces on sites. The parking lot shall be screened along the side and rear with shrubbery and or fencing as required by the planning board. That's the proposed amendment.
Comments on this?
So when they say per employee, do they mean on duty, or?
Yes, per employee on site.
So they they asked for um, Jessica to get a recommendation, and her recommendation was twelve, minimum fifteen maximum.
Yes. Yes, that came from the planner.
It came from the planner, I feel.
And and who's gonna enforce this? Like, it would be like if somebody complained, they'd go down to the zoning office and say.
The project will be designed with the required parking spaces.
The number of employees change per day, the number of cars they sell per month.
It's twelve.
Like.
The answer, it sounds like, is twelve.
They're gonna.
Like, they're calculating it based on twelve, we're gonna say twelve, and then if they decide to double their employees, it's still twelve.
Their recommendation with this employee, et cetera, et cetera, Jessica interpreted it, and her interpretation was minimum twelve, maximum fifteen, so that when the plan comes to the board, it's either gonna be twelve, thirteen, fourteen, or fifteen, and that's what it means.
Okay.
Correct.
So I'm fine with that.
Yeah, yeah. Like, um, right, motion to accept that recommendation?
I move to accept our recommendation.
Okay, second, oh, give the reason why.
Oh, I mean.
If you're voting yes, you don't need to.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Third recommendation?
Third recommendation is, uh, Borough Council should consider adding language, quote, overhead garage bay doors within the listed, uh, permitted accessory uses to specify the type of exterior door permitted, so as I mentioned earlier, the current, the language in the redevelopment plan just provided for exterior doors, and their recommendation is to clarify that these are, you know, the the garage bay doors.
Why?
Because.
What if they want to put like nice, big, like.
Sliding.
Barn, sliding doors, or something to make it look.
That's what I was actually thinking, there's a lot of dealerships have that.
Yeah.
Like a one bit accordion or whatever?
Yeah, like fully slide open, that you can kind of come in and out of them.
Did the was there any kind of, it was just the dollar per, or is it the planning board says, no response?
No, we've, no, this did not come from the redevelopment, this came from the planning board recommendation back to council, and originally in the, um original plan amendment, it said, uh, four repair bays with two exterior doors. And the recommendation is for clarification to be two overhead garage bay doors.
I I would say.
Reject that.
Reject it and say, just because we want them to have the flexibility to put in something that, yeah.
So.
So I I would move to reject that recommendation based on the fact that we want to give the builder or the developer the ability to, uh, have a flexibility to put in doors that meet their needs and the hopefully the benefit of the building.
Second?
I'll say.
All those in favor?
Individual votes, please, for rejections.
Okay.
Mr. Ambly?
Yes.
Mr. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. Mera?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yeah.
Mr. Mera?
Yes.
Okay, and then finally, the last clarification was, they were, um uh, which was an advisory item noted on the record by the planning board to clarify the parking standards to allow for the display of vehicles for sale in the front and side yards. So the proposed amendment says exactly that, vehicles for sale at a classic car, classic and collector car dealership may just be displayed in the front yard, and vehicles for sale at a classic and collector car dealership may be displayed in the side yard closer to the curb than the building facade.
Okay, that gives them more, I'm good with that. You have any motion left?
Uh, I move to accept that, yeah.
Second?
I'll say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we, we pick out the floor.
Yes, yes, now.
We moved to the, we've already had the it's already been moved, it's already been seconded, so now just a roll call, any any debate, any questions, comments on any of this?
Just to be clear for the record, it's the, what you're voting on now, the amendment is going to incorporate the two recommendations that you voted on, yes.
I I would open the public hearing again.
There's a reason to change this. Okay. So, we're gonna reopen the public, reopen the public hearing, you're saying?
Yes.
Reopen the public hearing. Um, on twenty twenty four dash twenty twelve, see if there's any additional public comment after we've made those amendments, Jordan. Great, thanks, no. Do we, we move it again? Nope, we're good, okay. All those in the public hearing? Will hold up?
Mr. Mera?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yeah.
Mr. Mera?
Yes.
Mr. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. Ambly?
Yes.
We did, well, we pretty well did, alright.
They're just so.
Yes.
Now, I appreciate that, but just, I would like to note that there's a resolution on your consent agenda.
Yeah.
That's approving the redevelopment agreement and a purchase and sale agreement for the same property with Fifteen Sandsberry LLC, which is currently designated as the conditional redeveloper of the property. The redevelopment, uh, agreements specifically designates the conditional redeveloper as the redeveloper of the property. It sets forth the rights and the parties and the responsibilities in the planning, construction, development, undertaking of the redevelopment project. It's, uh, sets forth the project schedule for the project from when approvals are needed to commencing the project, to completing the project. And it also provides that the redevelopers responsible to pay the borough costs incurred in connection with the project. The purchase and sale agreement covers the sale of the property from the borough to the redeveloper for a purchase price of one million five hundred thousand dollars. This was the highest price received of the, um, proposals that were submitted in response to the request for proposals. Um, following the execution, there's a, of the purchase and sale agreement, there's a thirty day period for due diligence. And then sixty days to close after the close of the due diligence period. This closing should coincide with the note that is maturing in March of twenty twenty five that was used to fund the acquisition of the property, so we anticipate the closing, uh, will occur prior to the note maturing.
Thank you very much for the work on it, thanks for the planning board votes work on it, and it has been a priority for a long time, so happy to see that it can affect. That was, and that's resolution two fifty. Alright, any resolutions that, I know we talked about them all, though there is one additional one, there's an additional one we should talk about.
Um.
Right?
Two sixty three.
Two sixty three.
Yeah.
Two sixty three or?
No, it's in the consent agenda, right? Two sixty four is the one outside, two sixty three is in the consent agenda. Do you want to just talk about that?
Um, yes, this is, I'm just asking you to authorize Millennium Strategies to apply for a theme grant for, um, an ambulance and other, um, equipment for the fire department. So, we hardly could get it, which would help fund the ambulance that we packed up. So this would just be authorized then to apply for a grant.
Should mention two fifty five is a very student member of the community during the fire department.
Yeah, I'd like to, if we can move that one up.
Separately? You don't understand what I'm saying, we said Jay, Jay's running fire department. So we'll, we'll do that for separately. Um, any others you want to talk about, can we talk about it last minute? Hey, does someone want to share? You mean that except for two fifty five?
Um I move that resolutions twenty four dash two thirty six to twenty four dash three sixty three, with the exception of twenty four dash two fifty five, be adopted.
Second.
Roll call it?
Mr. Ambly?
Yes.
Mr. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. Marrow?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. I move that resolution twenty four dash two fifty five be adopted.
I'll say.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yeah.
Mr. Marrow?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Mr. Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Ambly?
Uh I'm saying.
Okay, so moving to public hearing um for resolution twenty four dash two six four. Authorizing installation of parking lot lights at the Polo Grounds. So let me first open the public hearing to resolution twenty four dash two sixty four.
John Berthony?
Yeah.
Is that number, tell me?
Done. Go ahead. And just give your name and um address.
Hi, um am I up? Yeah. Uh John Berthony, thirty six Locust Drive uh in the borough. Um. Uh my my. Request here, my 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 hope is that the borough um while uh I I do see the, you know, the benefit of lights um. I would hope that the borough uh tables this postpones any decision on this until a couple of things of are have been um. Uh clarified, one uh is uh you know, how many lights we need, how they are gonna operate. There's been some. Uh back of so some uh back and forth between uh residents around the Polo Grounds on. How the lights are gonna be used, that hasn't been really resolved. Um. Two is um right now, all the playing fields are pretty much dark and they're gonna be dark for. A number of months. So I don't know why they don't know why we're going to be rushing on this. Thirdly, um and this was brought up at the last Borough Council meeting last week. Um we don't know the location of any pavilion slash restroom facilities that are gonna be put in. Which may require either more lights uh or reconfiguring the lights, so why redo the work if uh if we don't need to? Um that is, that is just um my my uh my input to this decision, hopefully. Um we we uh you know, we like working with the the borough. Um on this, we appreciate your reaching out to the neighborhood and look forward to um getting this done for the best of the whole town. I'm done.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments from the public? Nothing more. Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing. Do we want to move and then discuss?
I move that resolution twenty four about two sixty four authorizing the installation of parking lot lights at the Polo Grounds be adopted.
Any second?
I'll say.
Okay. In discussion, I mean Nancy, do you want to just give one quick reminder, kind of refresher, we talked about it in detail last meeting, but just.
Sure.
It could be.
Also Anthony has uh a little sketch.
Okay.
You know, I'll put that up there. This is the, I guess, continuation of the overall uh Polo Grounds project. Um. The blue lights, the blue circles, as you see there, represent a a street light, for lack of lack of better term, at a twenty feet high. There are a total of seven of them. Um it's, this is pretty much a, I mean, it's primarily a safety. Uh measure for when there are games there than when people leave, they have um. You know, adequate light to get to their car. Uh it is part of the plan. That we took out when we um used the co-op for the. Field, the turf field lights. Um and this is just a continuation of that plan. We already funded it um. You know, the. I won't call it a rush, but the timing of it is so that it could be done while the fields are not in use. There's an eight week. Basically, an eight week um delivery time, so that's two months. Um. So we're looking, I guess, maybe February at the earliest, if you if you go ahead with this. And you know, March is, March, April is when, you know, fields start getting used, I guess. So um. That's what the timing is. I mean, there is no particular rush, it's just the next step in carrying out all of the pieces of the Polo Grounds. Um that we talked about. And while we, there aren't many places to put the pavilion, and I suspect that. When we do it, it will be in the space that you originally talked about, which is not. Where these lights are going.
And the parking lot is not changing?
I don't, the parking lot is not changing, no.
And the sensors, I think, um. We talked about having them not motion activated.
No, they're not, no, somebody asked about that. They wouldn't be um motion activated, they would be in conjunction with a timer, so um. These kinds of sensors come on at dusk, you know, when it becomes dark, and they go off when it becomes light. But because there's no really no reason to keep these on all night long since the park does close, they would be in conjunction with the timer, so they would go off. At whatever, you know, pull on the clock or whatever time you decided um.
And can be changed if we decided to.
Could be changed, could be changed, and honestly, I mean, I don't know the reason why you'd have them on unless there was a mandate there.
Yeah. Okay.
Did did, well, I I saw you had sent an email out and you just made a comment, so I don't know if there were responses. I I didn't see any in my email box anywhere responded.
There was one response, I I it looks like I just sent the first thing, sorry.
Oh, that's alright. I was just curious if there are.
It was, no, it was the one. It was the one person who had requested um. I can read it if you want.
Was that, was that just? If it was gonna be voting?
There was a, there was a few more things.
Oh, okay.
Christine, do you have it? Do you want me to?
Um. Yeah, I have it. It just says, request, the subject says, request for clarification. Dear Nancy. Um I would appreciate if you could provide more details regarding the sensors and the schedule for when the lights will be turned off. As our community members frequently walk, walk their dogs, and have children playing on the field at night. And with animals also roaming the area, will the lights be activated with each movement or is there a specific system in place? So you answered that, right? This is what you want me to do?
Yeah.
Or the answer, oh, okay. And then it says additionally, could you clarify when this plan was added to the calendar for Monday? I reviewed the previous correspondence and did not see a plan for parking lights mentioned. But we did have.
You could read if you want.
Too.
Yeah, if you want to read my answer.
Yeah, the response was just about um. The parking lot lights have been in the plan since the beginning and were in the original lighting plans sent to follow me in April, and I remember that.
Yeah.
The original plan is still posted on the website, which is, and the number of light poles was reduced from the original plan. Which we did based on uh something that we got.
Okay.
Um then. Yeah, I mean, I I walk up there a lot and I know my kids aren't into actual sports, but. You know, you have the tennis courts in it too, so. I I do feel people use that as like a walking path and. If we're just adding lights for sleep, they're not like spotlights or anything crazy, and they're only twenty feet high.
They're twenty feet high, yeah, and if I can make a uh a suggestion, maybe want to ask the recreation committee since they're familiar. What with what games happen when and who's who's supposed to be in the park line, they can set the regulations for when the lights would be on and off.
Yes, it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to see it down.
Any other comments? No?
I mean, this was already the original plan, I mean, months ago, and they just. Didn't remember it because it was kind of bundled with the pavilion and we just were getting the lights in for the field itself.
Okay, uh roll call it?
Mr. Ambly?
Yes.
Mr. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. Marrow?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, moving to reports. No mayor, so no mayor up here. Um administrators report?
Thank you. Hi, Leni Tufay. Uh one, we were finally able to close out a county grant from twenty fifteen. Um it was for historical preservation for work on the downstairs square property.
Wow.
So uh today, we actually got a check on it, a lot of paths and that, but a long time coming. See, we haven't been getting interest, but. Um and then the other thing that I have is that we're also, last week, we were notified by movies that we maintained our triple A boundary.
Yeah.
So, yes, and also the mayor sends her a cheese at the Interfaith Thanksgiving service. Um vassing register is made up by of a lot of different houses of worship coming together, which is helpful right now.
Excellent. She's a speaker there. Speaker there, and um. The other board party did a great job, the downtown looks great, the decorations are both.
Um. They, I, you know, you have to give the chamber commerce a lot of credit.
Okay, yeah.
We we.
Thank you to all, everybody that participated in, the reefs, the downtown.
The trees.
Trees, yeah.
Probably based on approval date, but.
We currently.
Probably down late, I guess.
I think the tree lighting is the seven.
Yeah.
And that very is important.
And when is the middle lighting? I know that's private, but Jeff said that last time.
Last.
Twelve, okay. Okay, good. Um motion to accept the departmental monthly reports?
I move to accept monthly reports.
Second? Okay, uh voice vote, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Other ones, business, any correspondence, initiative or comments? Anthony?
No.
No, okay. Um unfinished business? Nothing? Do you have something?
I have, yeah, I guess nothing, no, I'm finished. Um I wanted to talk about the lacrosse wall, you know, talking about the Polo Grounds, actually. Um. So it was about probably fourteen months ago when the Somerset Hills Lacrosse um. Bird came here and asked if they could pay for a lacrosse wall to put up in the uh Polo Grounds park. So uh you would agree with it, and um we honestly did not hear anything until very recently. Uh because after they put the lights in, Councilwoman McCready mentioned that she thought one of the lights might be in the air or the pole or the uh lacrosse wall gonna go. So um Bob Markowitz, who was the recreation manager at the time, and um Tony Hajar, our engineer, went out. And looked at the area and. Found that there was enough room and actually talked about, you know. Maybe taking down some of the woods, put it a little further back to get it away from the track and field. Um. And actually, Bob had told me that the Somerset Hills had lost their funding, so we weren't sure when it was gonna happen. And then on Wednesday, and I got an email from the uh public works director, who happened to be in the park, and the wall was put up. And so I have some pictures of where it is, and um Anthony's gonna share those.
It was put up?
It was put up. So we didn't know it was gonna be put up. Um.
Yeah, sure, sure. So is is it interfering where a light will be?
Lights are.
No, lights are right there.
Oh, it's, oh, not these lights.
Yeah, they walked it after we put the lights in on the field.
Okay.
So that that's the wall. I mean, eventually uh they want to paint it. Um.
Yeah, we're improving the government again.
But if you see the the distance or the the proximity to the leechers. Well, it looks like there's enough space there, if if you keep going, they want to put a fence around it. And it will, the fence is supposed to be twenty five feet in each side, so if you go to the next one, Anthony. That's just close up.
This uh.
That's the side, this one, the light. So this is, this, well, the next one where Tony's standing there, so. Where Tony's standing is where twenty five feet is, so.
Yeah, you're not gonna get it there yet.
The next one?
Okay.
That Tony didn't move back, that's where the fence would end in proximity to the leechers. So, I mean, it it's there. Um you know, I mean, I'm not gonna say there's nothing we can do about it because uh. It got there, or I assume with a crane, it could be moved. I I just want. When Tony and I were in the park today, like three different people walked by, and you're just like, what is that? Because they don't know what it is, but they said, oh, that's a little crowded, isn't it? And I just, I'm wondering, um you know, Bob talked about making it a one side one, putting it further in the. In the, you know, backwards the tree line. Um. If you're okay with it there? And you want to, you know.
Recreation of that it?
No.
They walked it, that's the whole thing. So when when our lights went up, it was like, wow, we, the lacrosse wall is supposed to go back in that area. But when I saw it, I thought it was going from the far side of.
Of the light.
Like more by the old scoreboard.
And if you, well, if you look at one of the pictures, you can see some old soccer nets. Um. You see that?
Yeah.
This one?
Right, um that's the lacrosse net, and right back there is where I thought it was gonna go.
That, that one. Like on the other side of the light post, like.
Yeah.
So when those poles went in, that was my first thought. I was like, wait, the lacrosse wall is supposed to be over here.
So so they just. It all of a sudden appeared. They throw up a truck on to the field with a crane and put a basin. I mean, I know it's proof.
They had the, yeah, exactly, they had excavated and put clean stone in.
It's just like someone just showed up and started, wow.
Are you sure that they got it right? Since.
Yeah, I don't know, because that wasn't there when they walked it after the light went in. I assumed that if Tony and Bob and the.
No, it was just Tony and Bob. There was nobody to come across there.
Oh.
I, there was supposed to be, I don't know, I'm guessing that, but Tony told me nobody to come across with them. It was Tony and Bob. And Tony and Bob talked about in that general area, but backwards the woods, because Bob talked to me about having, you could definitely clean up some of the, clear up some of the woods. To move it back further, whether it was gonna be that way or.
I mean, it's like, it's a nice place.
There's no meat sitting on top of it, looks like 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 just.
Well, there was a cross.
Brand, it doesn't look like it's.
Oh, yeah.
No, I mean, I think that's the way that it, that's the way that you do it.
They all did, so.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just wondering, so is it like on a cement pad, or if you had to move it, you're talking about moving rock and you're not talking about. It wouldn't be, I I don't know.
It was, yeah, there's excavation too. I don't remember how far they dug and how much clean stone there is, but.
And it's supposed to be on, it's it's supposed to be on um. It's supposed to be on grass like that, is that normal?
Um, so, yeah, the ones that they showed us during the presentation during our PowerPoint, some of them had turf. Some of them had, I'm, is it, do you put, I'm gonna have cement as an option.
Yeah.
Um but, well, no, they were gonna use the tennis courts, as they had originally proposed, so whatever the tennis courts would be. So Tony said he he's not, he doesn't know if they were gonna want a turf on either side, but it's twenty five feet in either direction.
I got you, and so they put, and then and the the fencing they're planning on putting up, was that, or so just to remind me, this is fourteen months ago. Was that uh like net fencing or was it?
I think it's supposed to be changed, like, like a tennis fence, like a tennis, right?
Okay.
It's gotta be that high up because those balls are gonna fly.
Oh.
Crossfalls and not tennis balls.
Alright, so it's not, it's not, so it's it's like metal fencing, like a te- a rounded tennis court, interesting.
Yeah.
Okay, and and the just like as a risk management thing, this got installed, did we know that they, the person installed it had insurance?
He did not, and um.
Cause they did it without.
Did not have a valid for contract registration or insurance. Um.
So so I would say, let's inquire, what do we take to remove it? Right? And I cannot just an explanation?
Bob, so when they originally presented to us, it was going by the tennis courts. Behind the gazebo between there and the snack shack on that side of the end zone, if you will. Behind the gazebo between there and the snack shack on that side of the end zone, if you will, in football. Then they came back and said for whatever reason it needed to be moved from there, I couldn't, I can't remember why. Bob, we gave Bob the authority to work with the lacrosse team and move it wherever it was supposed to go. I don't know what that agreement was.
Well, so what happened was when Tony came, um, he looked at it, he didn't think that was a good place to go, so the three of them met out there. And came up with generally speaking, in the area where it is.
Good, but your idea was, or sorry, not your idea, the position was maybe a little bit further in the woods and maybe collaborate about.
That was the latest that I heard, yeah.
Okay, got it.
So, I mean, I don't think anybody ever put anything writing, I mean, I heard that there were stakes. Nobody knows where they are now. I heard that there was spray paint putting a year ago on grass.
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, I I don't know, um. Yeah, and there was no permit provided, which, you know. I know, you know, there was one that should have been required, but because we didn't know it was going in.
Yeah, that's.
They didn't, they didn't need construction, from what I understand, there was no construction permits because that, that is not contemplated in the U C C. So.
If we want it to be moved, we should inquire now before those fences are put out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that something that maybe you turn over to the rec committee and say, can you look at what was done, then we come up with a recommendation?
And then add the next meeting in December.
Yeah, they know not to put a fence up, right? We're not gonna have a fence tomorrow.
They have that permit for that too.
They need a permit for that, right, and so they, I don't think they're gonna do anything until they hear from us now, because the code enforcement officer did meet with.
Okay, so they know.
So, I mean, ideally, the best place would be back behind the far end of the um. You know, Roger Roger one bolt, but. I, there's what, I'm back there, so I'm, that would be like an engineering thing, so that, so rec would have to kind of coordinate. Cause the path is also gone, you can't, you know, they can't.
Exactly.
Being the right path, so they'd have to coordinate with um engineers to see where it's going.
Right, that's, I mean, that was the exact conversation we had at rec after they said they walked it, made sure it wasn't interfering with the walking path. Not the lights, da 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 da, and that's why I thought it was supposed to go on the other side of the light, just based on that conversation, but again, there was no drawing, there was nothing, so.
Yeah, and you know, another boss were there for that conversation and while, you know. In that general area might be okay, it just seems like everything's just packed in, like when you put the fence in, right?
Yeah.
Everything's just packed into that one little area.
Was that light too close? Is that why they?
No, the light of the twenty five feet on that side where they have to put the fence, Tony walked it out, there was still room.
But you, but my point being is they couldn't push it farther back because of the light, is that it?
No, they, oh, no, they could have gone further back into to the woods that way. And they also could have gone more towards light, and they probably could have gone the other side of the lane. So I think there are other options. I don't know what's involved in moving it, but.
Let's find out.
We'll find out.
Yeah.
Is it twenty five feet, I think?
Twenty five.
Yeah, if you look at the picture, if you bring up that picture of Tony, I think it's like twenty five by forty or something.
Thought it was like twenty five by forty or something like that. It's huge.
Uh, so if you look at Tony, Tony is, you know, whatever, less than six feet. I mean, he's not staying right next to it, but.
Twenty, twenty four.
Twenty feet tall, maybe?
No chance of it like falling over? Uh I'm not, look, I'm not a construction expert, I'm just. Twenty five feet, and it seems like a lot of cement and, yeah.
I don't think there's any chance of falling over. I did ask that because I asked if there were footings, cause if there's footings.
Yeah.
But there are not footings, because I don't um.
Does our construction department, have they like, have they, i- if not, fine, but it like, would it make sense to have them look at this just to say, we think this is safe or not safe?
Well, they were asked, that is the one place that lacrosse, the lacrosse people did call, and they said, oh, we don't have permits for that. We don't, yeah, so, I mean, uh from what I understand, some people who've done it in other counties, this is, this has to be.
Is that you?
Yeah.
I'm not saying it's unsafe, I'm just curious.
No, then I remember they, they were going pretty thoroughly about doing, like, it might be the wrong spot.
Yeah.
Let's get more information and.
Yeah.
See what it takes to move it.
Okay.
Okay. Any other finished business?
Um, I just wanted to ask about the walking path and the timing for that installation. Do we have that, since we didn't have public works this month?
Um. Still waiting for, you know, the bid was awarded, and the reason we wanted to award it earlier, we felt the drainage would be able to put in, you have to put in before the end of the year. The contractor's schedule, um, he he's been putting it off, so I guess he probably overboots himself. And um there is no, Tony didn't have pre-construction meeting yet because he can't pin the contractor then to the date. So I don't have any um dates to give you.
Okay.
But the plan, the original plan was put the drainage in before the end of the year.
Okay, and Tony's the one who designed the drainage, yes?
Yes.
Okay, okay, and and to be on the public record. The uh the contractor who won this bid has done a couple of other jobs in town and has not done them properly, so we need really complete oversight on that.
Um, well, he uh is a contractor who did burn it down here. Um, so, you know, he's the law's better, and Tony will be, Tony will be paying uh close attention.
Good, thank you.
There's Doug. I'm back. Time to close.
Right. I was there, unfinished.
Be done.
The unfinished business. Okay.
We got.
Was that unfinished business?
You wanna go to new business and then before your report?
Sure.
I have one item for new business. I think it's an environmental uh item. I had a resident chat to me about consumer, uh concern over bamboo in the borough. Um. He said uh he's specifically concerned with, he knows bamboo well. Um, Arindanaria, bambusa, and dendrocolamus in the borough. I did explain that um we had Eagle Scout project that removed some bamboo from rural property. His concern is more about if we would be willing to outright ban bamboo as other municipalities have, and we cited five municipalities. In New Jersey have outright banned this invasive species, um. So that was his request. I don't know if it's something maybe environmental commission take a look at? Maybe ask that? Okay, perfect. That was my. Yeah. Okay, which one on new business?
New business, anyone else?
All right, back to, uh, first of all, I have to give Jeff. His self eval, which you actually have on the. So I threw my hand thing back by the end of the month. Um, so we had uh Jeff Bueller from the Business Action Center do a walkthrough in town uh the end of October, and he will be. Giving us a report of what's working, what's not working, um, you know, signage, anything that we can change to make downtown more user friendly. You probably have seen, we've got the uh museum in the streets installed. So the the main one is at the library that has all the places. The um, what do you call it, QR code is not, it'll take you to the website. But in the spring, it'll actually have an narrated guided tour. Uh I was the guest speaker at Somerset Hills Rotary Meeting on November sixth. And uh even invited me to all the meetings. Um, I attended a fundraising dinner for the Somerset Food Bank. Um, it's quite an operation. If you've ever been down there, it is really impressive. It's, it looks like a grocery store, just they do a beautiful job there. We had a little goodbye party for Bob Markowitz on his last day. Um, we've still, we're meeting monthly with the Somerset Hills Public Safety Committee. Which is Bedminster, Bridgewater, Far Hills, P-Pac, um Basking Ridge, and us. And we actually got, which I thought was pretty impressive, um. The League of Municipalities added a a resolution for us on um. Measures to combat auto thefts that they will be sending on to the legislation legislators and um. Also governor and people related, so I just wanna give you a copy of the resolution, but we. Got married, I'm gonna. Not enough. I think I have enough for you too. The Somerset County Sigma Phi Committee is back on the. Um, he's back up again, uh the person who was the director of it had um gotten a promotion, so they have a new person in charge. So we will be back to meeting monthly, um I'm on the committee along with the Community Crisis People. Ace Hardware had its grand opening, I think, did you make it? Good, yes.
Christine and I both made it.
Oh, good. Um, I could not attend, I was at the Somerset County Youth Leadership. Um program doing a mock council meeting, which was really a lot of fun. It was so exciting to see young people interested in government. And and learning how it works and, you know, what you can and can't do and how and how they even progresses, so. Uh I think there were thirty teenagers there, and two from Burns High. Um, they were from all around the county and just really impressed with the quality of and their interest and their passion. Uh we had Mrs. G's retirement party, God, she's gonna be so missed. Uh she is the children's librarian, I guess, and the kids, I mean, it was. Amazing to watch. It looked like Santa Claus. She was sitting there with all these balloons around her. And a stream of kids just kept coming, a big long line to give her kisses and gifts and cards. She will be missed. Uh, this past Saturday, we did the grand reopening of Gary's. Um, if you haven't been in there lately, they really totally redone the inside. It's like twice as much stuff than than what used to be in there. Um, they've got a lot more food, um, just really impressive, so stop in for the holidays. Um, and tonight I was at the Community Interfaith Thanksgiving Service, which was really well done. I think last year it was at the mosque. This year it was at Bishop James in Basking Ridge. The mayor of uh Burns Township and myself participated, came with the program, as well as clergy from all over. In the area, so it's a really nice uh service. Uh just a reminder on. The sixth, next Friday, is the jazz concert, which is our last centennial event. The Burns High Jazz Band is gonna be doing uh hits from the Big Band Era, some Tommy Dorsey numbers. And we'll have some posters uh that Gary Thompson had made up with the history of. The music and pictures of Tommy Dorsey when he was here, so if you could be there, please come. It's gonna be wrapping up our centennial year. You think that's, that was me? All right, did I just say anything good? Oh, okay, we're ready for an open session, so if anyone in the public or on Zoom would like to speak. Please do so now.
No.
No, I can almost read it, yeah, but I'm trying to look at it. Oops, I read my report without my glasses, huh? All right, no, nobody? All right, that's it, then I will close the public session. We do not have um executive.
The one item we have to mention, right? Because we're all, particularly, as you announced at the last meeting, we're gonna take a field trip to. See the borough offices and the basement of the library, make the library, because it'll be kind of a quorum going. Um, of members of council and the mayor. Public is more than welcome to do this.
Yeah, okay, listen to the jury. I got one.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
No, it's not.
All right, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yeah, Thanksgiving, everybody, good to see.